I'd like to call this regular council meeting to order. At this time, would everybody please rise for a moment of silence?
(inaudible)
Mr. Lutz?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mr. Nell?
Yes, here.
Mr. Musi?
Here.
Mr. Sautier?
Here.
Mr. Plensky?
Here.
Mr. Dugess.
Here.
The presentations, before I close, all bids for trash collection, is there anybody else here, because it was supposed to close at 7:00? At this time, the bids are now closed. I'm going to turn this part of the meeting over to our mayor to do presentations for the fire and for the police department.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the council for being part of this presentation at these times like this that we all are, I mean, we're proud of our police department, our departments and services to begin with, but it's really nice to be able to give out awards. First off, we're going to start with the police department. As everybody here knows, that over the last couple of years, with the new building, we received a lot of grants, we were able to go out and buy some new equipment that would enable our police officers to do an even better job than what they're already doing. With that comes a requirement of additional training. We're very fortunate in our department, all our officers are very interested in achieving higher levels of education. One of our sergeants, Sergeant Lutz, sent myself and the chief a letter recommending that two of his officers be recognized for the outstanding job that they've done in fingerprint and learning equipment and solving quite a few cases utilizing this new equipment we have. Also, two, there is a closeout, one case that was over a year old. At this time, I'd like to ask Police Chief Porter to come up.
As the mayor said, over the past several years, we've been very fortunate to obtain some very high-tech equipment and get some of the separate training for our officers, and it's been very beneficial to, we still can't do listage or DNA matches here in our small town, pretty much anything that has to do with fingerprints, we can do here in the borough.
I can tell you that one of the most gratifying experiences of a police officer can have is catching a bad guy while the crime is still in progress or shortly thereafter. But coming a close second to that would be going to a crime scene, looking for latent fingerprints, finding those prints, lifting the prints, preserving them, and then having them identified and classified, and then getting a match on a subject. And then going out and arresting that unsuspecting suspect several days or weeks later. And that's exactly what these two officers that are being commended tonight have done. All our officers have embraced this new technology, but these two officers, in a very short period of time, have done an excellent, excellent job right out of the starting gate when we got this equipment. So at this time, I'd like to bring forward Officer Justin Gross and Officer William Davis. The certificate of commendation reads to both officers, "In recognition of your accomplishments in the field of crime scene evidence collection in Bristol Borough culminating in numerous arrests." Now, in a very short period of time, these officers combined have solved, I believe, up to eight cases based on forensic fingerprint evidence taken at the scene. So I think that deserves a big round of applause for these officers.[327.12][327.12](applause)
I just appreciate the technology that we've been, you know, so fortunate to obtain for the police department. We appreciate everything the council and the mayor and the chief has done. We appreciate that.
Thank you.[352.12][352.12](applause) Also, back in September, we had an incident down at the wharf about 3:00 in the morning, where an individual drove off the wharf. I'd like to ask the Fire Chief Herb Slack to come up. It's part of tonight, we'd like to recognize the service from our firefighters and rescue squad and police who participated in that. I'm going to read a letter that I received that was sent to myself and the council president from Polisca, Fire Chief Herb Slack. "September 20th, 2009, at 3:09, Engine 50 and, Engine 50 and Quip 51 were dispatched to the area of the Aqua Water Plant for a fire investigation of a large fire observed on the riverbanks in Pennsylvania and reported in New Jersey. Chief Herb Slack arrived at the water plant, there was no sign of a fire. He was advised the fire could possibly be behind the old theater. Engine 50 responded at 3:11 hours with a crew of five. Firefighter Michael Badalotto, firefighter Bradley Pond, firefighter James Burnett, firefighter Robert Huffnagle, firefighter Robert Bonhurst. Engine 50 was directed to check the area of the Bristol Wharf. At 03:12 hours, Station 50 Assistant Chief Steve Reeves arrived at the wharf in his personal vehicle, saw a vehicle floating in the river north of the wharf. Chief Reeves reported the information to county fire radio and requested dispatch of marine units. At 013 hours, when Engine 50 arrived on location and prepared to attempt a rescue, the vehicle began to sink. Victim was observed moving around inside the vehicle, was able to climb out of the car into the water. Firefighter Huffnagle positioned himself on the pier at the rear of the Riverside Theater and coached the victim to swim towards his voice. When the victim was within 50 feet of the pier, firefighter Brad Pond attempted to throw a life safety rope to the victim. The rope landed within feet of the victim but began to float away due to the incoming tide. The victim now appeared to be weakening and struggling to stay afloat. When asked, firefighter Burnett immediately volunteered and entered the water. With use of a life safety rope, firefighter Burnett reached the victim and secured himself to her. Firefighter Badalotto, Bonhurst, Bristol Borough Police Officer James Ellis, and Dino Lapore pulled the victim and firefighter Burnett towards the shoreline. Chief Reeves, firefighter Huffnagle, firefighter Pond, and paramedic Dan Moreau, and EMT Shawn Thompson from Bucks County Rescue Squad partially entered the water and assisted to remove the victim and firefighter Burnett from the water. The victim was placed in an ambulance and transported to the area hospital. Firefighter Burnett's heroic actions, supported by the members of Station 50, the police department, and the Bucks County Rescue Squad, saved this woman's life. The river's current directly affected the tides and can present an extremely dangerous environment. For his extraordinary efforts and great personal risk to enter the river and rescue this woman, further recommend that firefighter James Burnett be awarded a Medal of Gallantry. Delaware River tides can be extremely strong and dangerous to anyone of that, any person, of any person, of any age, and any physical strength. I believe that firefighter Burnett is worthy of this award. Firefighter Burnett is married and has three children. The borough should be extremely proud of the efforts of the firefighters that saved this woman's life. Requesting the borough council and the mayor to present a commendation to the personnel who assisted in the rescue. Each member performed this rescue safely and in an effective manner." At this time, I'd like to turn over to Fire Chief Slack.
Okay, I'm going to, first thing I'll do is call up the people that were, in recognition of the unit citation. First one, Daniel Moreau, Bucks County Rescue Squad. EMT Shawn Thompson. Police Officer Dino Lapore. What the citation reads is, "Bristol Borough Fire Department, unit citation is awarded to the individual for outstanding performance in the rescue of the driver of a vehicle in the Delaware River at the Bristol Wharf on September 20th, 2009." And while the team effort clearly is important to the success of the rescue, there's also a significant individual effort that's contributed to the rescue. And as the mayor mentioned when he read the thing, when asked, James Burnett jumped into the river, swam out to the lady, got to her, secured her, and they were able to make the rescue. And for this, the borough is awarding him a Medal of Gallantry. And the certificate for that reads, "Medal of Gallantry is awarded to James Burnett for your courage, bravery, and your profound regard for human life in entering the Delaware River and swimming out to rescue the driver of a vehicle that had gone into the river
I want to thank all the other fire personnel and rescue personnel that showed up tonight to support their brothers and sisters.
Good job.
Thank you, Steve.
Steve, thanks for all the work, ma'am.
Thank you so much. I love Steve.
Thank you. He just wants to cook, girl.
Yeah.
(inaudible) Merle.
Merle. Want me to shut the doors? Merle, can you close the doors, please? I got a big mouth. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. The first thing we'd like to do is open up our trash contracts. The bids were due at 7:00 PM. There were three bidders, Mascara, Waste, and BFI, who picked up their proposal but did not submit one. So it's coming down to two between Mascara and Waste Management. So I'd like to thank, is anybody here from Waste Management? What's your name?
(inaudible).
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Sorry, Kim Sodak.
Kim? And we have the owner of Mascara here, Pat Mascara, and Sam Augustine from Mascara. So thank both of you for being here, and we want to thank both of you for putting a bid, and we wish you both, you know, best of luck. So we'll open Waste Management, looks like it's on the top. So Mr. Dillon will open it, it's a sealed envelope, does everybody want to say it? It's not been opened, and he can either pass it to me, and I'll read. There's from one set, five years contracts. When they're done, they'll be placed on that table for everybody to review the contract if you want. For alternate B, which is the borough gets an opportunity for Monday, Thursday, or Tuesday, Friday, is the same exact quote. For one bulk item each week is included in their bid. And once-a-week pickup of recyclables brings it, that's $178,716. Same thing for alternate B. The total is $1,001,34132. The additional charge for waste leaf pickup once a month, January through October, is And then there's an additional charge for bulk pickup for two items each collection day is $88,896. I'm just reading numbers to solicitor, to manager, and the council's going to have to sit down and go through all these contracts to see what year, how this whole thing works, sort of bid bonds, all accurate, which I'm sure they are because they're reliable companies. I'll go to two years, is $1,00910832. For once-a-week recyclable is $357,432, which is the same on the other side, which total is $2,00268264. Additional $69,000 for waste, and additional $177,000 for bulk pickup for two items on each collection day. For a three-year contract is $2,0866. They both included the bulk. Pickup for recyclables is $536148, which brings it a total of $3,402396, adding $103,968 for waste, and $266,904 for two items. Four-year contract is $3,859. I just did the three. I'm on the four-year. Once-a-week recyclable, $722,000016, for a total of $4,581888. The additional waste leaf is $139,968. Additional bulk is $359,472. The fifty-year contract is $489,4893240. $915,240 for the recyclable, which brings you a total of $5,808480. $177,480 for waste, and $455,640 for the additional pickup. And then there's a two-year option at the end of five years with this contract. Twice-a-week would be $2,224344. The recyclable is $416064, for a total of $2,640. Add $80,664 for the waste, and $207,216 for additional bulk twice-a-week. And all these numbers match up across. So that is Waste Management, and again, the manager, anybody's going to have to go through that. Pat went to Catholic school, and he's used to wrapping with brown paper.[1446.16][1446.16](laughing) That's how we did our books. It's all recyclable.
Are you getting personal items?
I never seen one wrap that tight.
Amen.
Okay. For the one-year, twice-a-week pickup is $937860. For the recyclable is $140,136, for a total of $1,077,996. Additional charge for waste is $9648. No additional charge for bulk pickup twice. The waste leaf was $9,648. So the first year is $1134132 with Waste Management, and what Mascara is $1077996. Any closer than that? On year two, it's $191837920, seconds included. For the recyclable is $286654, brings it a total of $2,205035, which is still under the other one. $19,584 for waste, no additional charge. Twice-a-week pickup is $2,000, I mean, our three-year contract is $2,961,756, included in three A above. Once-a-week for recyclable and leaf is $442548, total of $3,404,304. This goes to $3,402. $29,808 for waste, and no additional charge for, additional charge for bulk pickup, two items on each collection day. On the four-year contract is $4,018464, included in four A. Once-a-week recyclable, $600,480, total $4,618,944. Additional charge for yard waste is $40,368, no additional charge. Twice-a-week for five years is $51,000,516080. The recyclable is $764,460, total $5,880,540. Additional yard waste is $51,300. This one's $177,000, no additional charge. Right, these all have additional charge, none of Mascara's had additional charge. On the two-year option, $2,168,256. The recyclable is $324,000 even, total $2,492,256, $64408. $22,152 for yard waste, no additional charge. So I want to thank...
Mr. President, can I please get that five-year figure from Mascara? The total of bottom line?
Well, you can't go by that, because the bottom line is $5,880540.
Okay.
$51,000 in waste for leaf and every month from January through October. And then there's no additional charge for bulk twice-a-week on all of Mascara's. Right, and I said that. Alternate B is all the same numbers as alternate A, there's no changes. So we really have to look at this, and I guess our solicitors are going to have to give us an opinion on how this works, but again, two closed bids. We want to thank both of you for taking the time and putting these bid specs together, and hopefully... and hopefully we'll be awarding this. We have to at our December meeting. So I'm gonna put, have the manager put both of these books on that desk. If either company would like to look at the numbers now, you just want to see them now? Cause they'll be right here if you want them. I could hand them to both of yous to look at or we'll just leave them here for the public to look at. Whatever you want.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mascara. Thank you, Sam. Okay. We have a presentation this evening from... It's not on here. Concerning the Powerhouse in Bristol Borough. At this time, I don't know who's gonna be doing the speaking. Marcel, are you gonna be speaking?
Yeah.
There's a podium right there.
Okay.
Are you the only one speaking?
No, somebody else.
Just before you get started, I just want to give everybody a...
Sure.
Just watch them chairs, they flip back sometimes, huh? Just to give everybody, bring you up to date on what's going on here. About a little over two years ago Keystone Group came to the Borough Council and said they wanted to renovate the Powerhouse into 30 luxurious condominiums. And they just got done finishing the project on Mill Street, which they had a reputation of doing an outstanding job. The council then worked with them and this entire council welcomed them with open arms to come here to do this project, to take a rundown building and turn it into something special. The Borough through eminent domain took that building because it was blighted and we were tired of looking at it. When Keystone came in and bid for the ground through the redevelopment authority, we, they had two years to complete this project. With the economy in the shape it was, they asked for an extension. We gave them an extension, but it came to a point where the council was tired of waiting. We're all in the same boat, the economy's bad, but something had to get done. So we either wanted the redevelopment authority to take the building back or to have this group fulfill their obligation, which this council, I think, bent over backwards to do this project with them. Since then, we were contacted that this group is now working hand-in-hand with Habitat to try to do this project. So Marcel Groen, I guess, is their attorney, who's gonna be speaking on their behalf tonight and giving this counsel. We don't have anything to vote on tonight because the ground is with the redevelopment authority and the redevelopment authority won't do anything without our opinion. So Marcel, you have the floor and see where we go with this.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you indicated, my name is Marcel Groen. I'm a partner with the law firm of Fox Rothschild. I represent Keystone Redevelopment, the original purchaser of the site from the redevelopment authority known as Powerhouse at Grundy Mills. At least that's what the, what the idea was to name it. That was entered in 2006 originally. I'm also here with Ms. Linda Andrews, who is the executive director of the, for Habitat for Humanity, the Bucks County Division. And she will be talking exactly about what her organization will be doing in terms of bringing this project to fruition. Much of what you said is out, not all of, all of what you said is accurate and I do want to emphasize, as many of you know, we've, my clients, when they first got the project and for several years thereafter, tried everything in their power in order to try to sell the units that were contemplated. And with the economy being what it was, what it turned out to be, that proved to be absolutely As a result, and I don't want to rehash all of that, but you've seen the plans we have copied, we have a sketch plan, not a site plan, if you will, a plan to show what the outside of the exterior would look like when we're done. We have, can you hear me all right, by the way?
The TV's hearing you, not me.
Well, it's you that I want to...
Oh, I can hear you. Crystal clear.
My clients have signed an agreement with Habitat for this particular project and I wanted to fill you in a little bit as to what our plans were and how, if at all, they differ from what we came to speak to you before. First, let me tell you that those plans are fundamentally the same as they've always been. They are not changing. The original agreement was for 30 units, we have agreed to limit ourselves to 30 units. So there will not be any additional units. Obviously Habitat has its own construction methodology, which they will explain to you. But we also want to let you know that we will be partnering with them. Our function in this partnership will be to construct the exterior. And we have some pictures of what the exterior will look like. They will fundamentally look the same as we originally presented. The same team that worked for my clients on the Canal property that you previously mentioned and that we all think was done very, very well, will be in charge of doing the exterior on this particular site. And in addition to that, my client will be responsible for the major non-mechanical infrastructure of the inside of the property, such as the stair towers, the elevator shafts, the window cuts and the roof and things of that sort. So what is most important for you and the public to understand is that we are continuing to assume our responsibility of what the outside of the property will look like and the fact that it will not be different than what we agreed to earlier.
Your selling point to this council when they came in. This plan that was presented here was something that I think sold council.
Well, that's the picture we're showing you today and that has not and will not change. I, obviously Habitat for Humanity, which I think all of you know, has done some phenomenal work in the county. And I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Andrews to explain to you exactly how that particular...
Yeah.
Do you have any questions, Jim?
Yeah, that has the second floor on there, which isn't supposed to have...
Well, let me, let me say this to you. We have two plans and I don't think the final decision has been made. One is like this, which has one floor and the other one has the two floors. However, both of them will only have 30 units regardless. There's no additional units. If we go with the second floor, that's merely to make the sizes of the units somewhat larger and easier to sell. But if you wish, and I can look, you can see, frankly, the same, the only difference is the additional floor. But by agreement, we have agreed that we will not be more than 30 units. You should also be aware that in conjunction with, first with Habitat, we had already signed an agreement in which we assigned all of the rights and obligation that we have with the Borough with respect to this project. That is, they've agreed to accept all of the obligations that we had previously accepted as part of their agreement. As you know, subsequently, we've had some discussions with Mr. Salerno and Mr. Alfano and we, I'll state right now, I think we're just about there. We thought we were there, but just about there. And we are again, and they are again, agreeing to accept all of the obligations and responsibilities under the original agreements. We're not seeking any modifications in either case.
Just, just for the record and for the public, Mr. Alfano's office is being, Borough Council is being represented by Amy. I know you got a new last name, you got married.
I'm still practicing under Lackowitz.
Still under Lackowitz? Amy, who's here representing the Borough that works for Mr. Alfano, so...
So with that, I'd like to turn, if you have...
That's fine.
I'm available for questions, but I would like to turn...
Oh, well, let's hear what she has to say.
And then the one other thing, you ought to be aware, if we've already shown, I think we've already sent copies of our financing requirements, which is not really a requirement. We really have everything in place this time. When we're ready to, when this assignment and the RDA approves, we're ready to start
Can you hear me? Okay. Again, my name is Linda Andrews. I'm the executive director of Habitat for Humanity in Bucks County. What Habitat for Humanity does, and I'd like to give just a brief overview first of all, because there's a lot of broad misconceptions about what we do. We provide affordable housing opportunities for the working class. We are not a home giveaway program. We're not Section 8 housing. We don't provide homeless shelters. These are homeowner opportunities, just like everyone else. It is estimated that, actually, two years ago, it was estimated that there were 26,000 people in Bucks County needing affordable housing. At that time, it was also expected that that number would grow by as much as 45% over the next 10 years within the region. I strongly suspect that at this point in time with the economy, that those numbers have changed dramatically. Our homeowners are selected based on their need for housing, their ability to repay their mortgage and their willingness to work in partnership with Habitat for Humanity. Families are selected very much the same criteria as anyone else applying for a mortgage. They have to be able to qualify for that mortgage. They have to have fair credit. They have to demonstrate their ability to repay. They have to prove that they have stable income, which unfortunately does not include It might include something such as child support, but they have to show that they have a job. Most of these families right now are spending more than 50% of their income on their housing. They live in overcrowded conditions or they may live in units with severe physical deficiencies in their plumbing, their heating. We call this substandard housing. The high cost of their, their living overhead leaves them very little money with, for basic necessities such as food, clothing, healthcare. We find that most of our families, once they're able to remove into their home with us, that they're able to save on average about $500 per month over what they were paying in rent previously. This is a significant number. Our homeowners, they're very important to the community. They're important to the economic health of a community. Most of our homeowners are holding jobs such as EMTs, they're childcare workers, they're social service workers, they're hospital technicians, teachers, factory workers, administrative assistants. They work in retail services, in restaurants. Because of their partnership with Habitat, they continue to give back to the community that helped them by supporting the community, by volunteering as firemen, town watch, community sports teams and in schools. Since our founding, Bucks County's founding in 1990, we have partnered with almost 70 families in Bucks County. 14 of them were here originally in Bristol and the remaining since then are in the community of Trumbowersville and Upper Bucks. In Bristol, we did 14 single homes. In Trumbowersville, we built a, just completed construction on a 73-unit townhome community. That included, that was a phenomenal, large project. I would invite anyone to come see it. I'd also invite you to come and see our latest project located in Percasi, where we are doing a project very similar to the Powerhouse, just not quite as large. We're taking what used to be known as the Baseball Factory in Percasi, most recently the Pen Ridge Senior Center and converting that into six condo-style units. So it's something we have a lot of experience doing. Our families come from all over Bucks County. They have to prove to us, part of their application project is that they live or work in Bucks County for at least a year. So these are folks who are already members of the community. What we're looking to do with the Powerhouse is actually continue the project that Keystone presented you with. The difference is, we will not be doing high-end units on the inside. The exterior is not gonna change. What you see is what you're gonna get. But we will not be doing high-end cabinetry, granite countertops, high-end flooring. We provide simple, decent, affordable housing. The other thing that we don't include is any kind of a profit margin. Our homes are sold to the homeowners at our construction costs. It includes no overhead for those families. Most of the, a good number of the units will, the mortgages will actually be held by us at a 0% interest rate, which obviously keeps it very, very affordable for them. Those of a slightly higher income can qualify those in what we call a Tier 2 partnership, where all of the requirements are still the same, but because they can afford, they can qualify for a mortgage, they simply cannot qualify for a mortgage high enough to be able to purchase a home in Bucks County. So they're gonna get their home at cost at a low-interest-rate mortgage. The other way we help to keep down on some costs is volunteer labor. Our homeowners are required to do sweat equity, which requires them to also come work on their home or the homes of their neighbors. So they will get to know the people who are living around them quite intimately during their sweat equity time. So that's part of our labor, but the other part is the people that come out to help us build. We do have a full-time construction crew, but it's only three people. So the rest of them are actually, the labor is provided by volunteers and that's a significant savings for us. That is...
How much the units will cost?
Sure. Our income guidelines, just so you might be interested in knowing as well, we follow the HUD guidelines. So it varies based on family size and the projections run for anywhere from one member of the family, which would be a single household, to eight. I don't expect that any of these units will have eight members of the household. But the income ranges for the one-to-eight-sized families run anywhere from 21,780 to 82,160. That is...
That again?
The income ranges will be a low of 21,780 to a high of 82,180. Our families, they have to prove that they're within 40 to 80% of the median income for the region, which presently is at 77,8 is the median. And again, it varies according to family size and the number of wage earners within the household. Our projections for the units would be sold at an average of about $100,000.
$100,000. Far cry from what Mr. Lockery stood up here and sold discount and this council, this count on saying that they wanted to do high-end units starting at $300,000 and up. Big difference.
Big difference.
To have this council chain zoning and go out of their way to do everything we can to make this project work and then he turns, that firm turned around and presents this now to council. And believe me, I'm not against Habitat. I don't want you to take this the wrong way. But we have a lot of low-income housing in Bristol Borough and it's just, just keeps piling up and piling up. You said you have these all Upper Bucks? How many jobs you do Upper Bucks?
Sorry, repeat that?
You said Habitat built several homes Upper Bucks County?
73.
In Upper Bucks County?
Upper Bucks.
And what did they sell for?
115 to 132.
And what was the neighborhood selling for?
The average in the neighborhood was probably, well, over the last nine years would have ranged somewhere between 250 and 350, depending on the home.
President, if I may, don't forget, there were two things that were mentioned that have to be added to the price. One is that there's a lot of sweat equity that the individual person put into it. And secondly is that there is no profit margin in this particular unit. So that we believe that...
There's no profit margin for the builder, once you get to the inside. But out of the $3.5 million grant that Habitat's got for this project, the outside of this project, there's a lot of money to be made on that. So let's not sit here tonight and act like we're all here to help everybody. Don't tell, I'm a builder. So don't sit here and say $3.5 million, nobody's making money on this project.
I didn't say...
All right, Marcel, let's not even go down that route.
I mentioned that as...
This council was taken over by that firm and I'll go on record by saying it. Not, nothing against Habitat, but they stood up here, they lied to this borough and they got this building, they went and financed the building, now they got three and, who's doing the outside of the building for $3.5 million? Not Habitat, are they? Who's doing the project? Keystone.
Right.
Keystone's getting $3.5 million to do the renovations on the exterior of the building.
That's not true.
Wow.
It's just not true.
Rob...
I don't know where you got those numbers from, but those numbers just aren't accurate.
They're doing, who's doing the renovation on the building?
I am. My hair.
Who you work for, Chuck?
I work for Keystone.
Okay, so Keystone...
There is no profit margin.
So everybody's going here working for nothing?
The contract with the company is Habitat, this is an open book project.
Okay.
Habitat's, you all cost for every contract for coming on this job and there is zero profit yet.
Nobody's making a dime.
We are not.
Okay.
And it's not being done for $3.5 million?
Well, the documents I read, there's a $3.5 million loan grant that Habitat's getting. Out of the $3.5 million, it's to pay for the exterior of the building to get... Out of the $3.5 million, it's to pay for the exterior of the building to get-
It does not say $3.5 million.
It doesn't?
No. 2.19.
1.99.
The loan amount is 3.3 million. Establish a commitment line of credit that will be used to fund the acquisition, site improvements, calls for the Grundy Parson located Canal Washington Street. I don't know, what's that for?
It's a line of credit to complete reconstruction of the building. It's a line of credit that recycles through the project.
That's the inside and the outside.
So we're doing the whole project for $3.5 million?
I didn't say that. What we said was, it's a line of credit, and the line of credit, as it gets paid down, gets reset, and the amount stays at 3.35 million dollars. But the fact of the matter is, and I can't tell you exactly what the numbers are, but this has cost my clients today also a lot of money, because they've put a lot of money-
It doesn't matter to me what it cost your clients.
You made a comment that-
It really doesn't.
You made a comment that you were concerned that there was profit being made.
I don't, I mean, look, I was entitled to, everybody's entitled to make money.
At this point in time, nobody's-
But don't come up here like we're the, you know, the fair-weather child, and we're going to, you know, welcome everybody, and we're doing this all just to help everybody. It's not the case.
Of course, that everybody wants, in this particular case, everybody also wants to make sure that they limit their, because this is, this project has not gone well.
Let me ask you a question. You said some units may have eight people in them.
No. No, no, no. That's just the HUD guidelines for-
Well, let's say I'm a family of eight, I want to purchase one, you're going to turn me down?
And we also have other guidelines we have to adhere to, which is the number of people and the number of bedrooms.
I'm just asking a question. If I'm a family of eight, will you turn me down, or will you sell me a unit?
No, we would have to turn you down.
Okay. What is the most you think you would put in our family members?
Depending on the number of bedrooms, based on what we currently have-
Well, what's the biggest unit you designed, or you didn't get into that yet?
We're not finished with that yet.
Two bedrooms.
Assuming two bedrooms, you'd be looking at a maximum of four. And that's assuming that two children are of the same gender.
Same gender.
Mm-hmm.
Because we do have a parking issue out here, too.
With all due respect, Mr. President, as you know, there has been a lease that's been signed for the property that was requested-
I understand that.
At least is a 15-year lease with a 15-year option, effectively under the lease.
But the zoning was changed because it was supposed to be transient, and it's one car per unit instead of two cars. Because the proposal that they presented to us was, they were going to try to market people that were taking the train back and forth to work in Princeton and Philadelphia. So they didn't need that much parking. My concern now is that you have families of four, husband and wife, boat drive, their kids become of age, now you've got four cars. Where do they put all these vehicles?
Probably the same thing that they would have done had there been more, had, before at a higher price. The fact is, that I can't tell you how many cars people are going to have. You're still across the street from the train station. This is still a good site for people to get on and off public transportation. I don't want to argue against myself, but generally speaking, the wealthier people are, the more cars they-
But these, I'm just bringing you up points that were brought to council that were used to, for us to-
There should be, there should be no difference that I can see, that in terms of any of the issues that you've raised, other than it's being sold through a different mechanism.
All right. Another question I have, is there going to be a condo association involved with this?
Absolutely.
Okay. How much do you project that to be?
On average, we look at our condo fees are running at about $100 to $125 a month for them.
So it's, if it's $100 a month on 30 units, it's $3,000, right?
Yes.
So it's 30, $42,000 a year that you expect to take in. Don't you think it's going to cost more than that to maintain that building?
I have not been able to take a close look at those details yet.
Well, that's a concern of mine, because first of all, we've got to make sure there's enough money to do the project and to finish the project, and within the 24 months that you're agreeing to. Then after the project's finished, the borough doesn't want to be left with a project that starts falling apart and starting to look bad, and there's no association that could substantiate the financial end of maintaining this. And we all know at $100 a month, the building that they own, they have now, I think the association fee is well over a few hundred dollars a month, and it's a building that doesn't require that much maintenance. So it's something that I like to hear or be part of our agreement, that we could have some kind of association, or somebody going to guarantee that this building is going to always look as beautiful as that building they're designing. I don't know how we go about that.
There will be an association, that that association will be set up to be economically viable, and to be responsible and able to meet all of its obligations. While we have no obligation, we'll be happy to share the document at the appropriate time with your solicitor.
All right. I got to just take a break with this. I'm going to go.
Can I just ask a question? Mr. Groen, I'm looking at Mr. Lockery, who is the managing park member of Keystone Redevelopment's letter of October 14th to Mr. White, page 2.
Give me one second, Mr. Dillon. The October 14th or 15th letter?
October 14th, 2009.
I don't have that, I have an October 15th letter.
I don't think we have the 15th, so if we could get the 15th, I think it'd be good. But anyhow, the 14th letter, it's just a couple of points. The total project cost will exceed 5.9 million, creating at a minimum, at a minimum, 30 residential tax-ratable units.
Right.
This first started at 24. I thought it was a maximum of 30, and this letter, it says a minimum.
We have subsequently agreed, in conjunction with your solicitor, to abide by 30 units by written assignment.
Okay. That are owner-occupied for the Bristol Borough community, providing approximately $75,000 in annual tax revenue. Can we get a breakdown of that? What-
You're probably in a better position to do than we are. I'm not being cute about that. There are going to be 30 units, and I assume that the, that we try to figure out what could be expected to generate by way of taxes based upon units, which I think we assumed would have a value of about $180,000.
Not to be cute about it, I'm just asking, can you give us a breakdown of the, you know, how you feel this will generate $75,000 in annual tax revenue? I'm just asking if we can get, you know, the basis of that. I'm sure Mr. Lockery can do that without too much difficulty. Can we get it in writing? Can we get it in writing?
I think he's talking back there. They can't hear.
Yeah, if anybody wants to talk, come up to the mic, because everything's being televised.
So we can just get that breakdown? I appreciate it. The next sentence-
Mr. Dillon, you're, you of all people, as the borough manager and very good at it, for a long, long time, know exactly what the taxes would be, that would be generated on 30 units. I don't know if that was based upon 24, 30, or 36.
I think I'm pretty good at it, but I'm just asking for Mr. Lockery, who's made a statement that it's going to provide 75,000 in annual tax revenue to the borough, I'd like to see the basis for it.
I guess my question to you is, if you believe it's wrong, why don't you tell me where, that it is, and I'll-
The answer's no, right? You won't give it to me.
Who provided it?
All right. Thank you. The next sentence, comparable Habitat projects in other Bucks County communities reflect home values that will range in value from 175,000 to 195,000.
That's right.
Didn't we just hear it was $100,000?
What you heard was what the purchase price would be. As I said to you, the purchase price will be below the actual value of the units because of the fact that there is sweat equity involved, and because of the fact that there's no profit margin. So whereas the, the unit may be sold for $100,000, my guess is, you might decide to appraise it at its fair market value, which we expect to be significantly greater.
Well, as you're aware, the borough doesn't do the assessment, the county does the assessment.
I understand that, but that doesn't mean, sorry. Actually, let's go to-
For Ms. Andrews, one of the things I'd like counsel to hear, and we discussed this at the meeting, according to this October letter, this is a $5.9 million project.
Yes.
I understand some of it's sweat equity. So far, there's 3.3 and 0.75 funding in place?
Yes.
Two Unives, two Univest loans?
Yes, that's correct.
But the 750 is gone for the purchase price?
Yes.
So there's 3.3 left?
Yes.
And a bulk of that's going to go for the, for the exterior and interior renovations, et cetera, which don't include the units. Is that correct? My question is, what's in place, other than the balance of the Univest loan, what's in place to finance this? I understand there may be some grants.
Yes.
Could you make any representations as to that?
We have just, actually just received one grant through the New Market Tax Credit Program, which will bring in about $450,000 to the project. We have an application in with DCED, which is looking very favorable, for 600,000. We have what's called a shop grant going in at 450,000. We have tentative commitments so far for $300,000 in corporate sponsorships for the homes. That totals 1.8 million. The county funding, we also get county home funds for the project from the Housing Trust Fund at $65,000 per unit. Would total just over $2 million. And of the units that we, that we sell at the second tier, where they actually get their own mortgage at a low interest rate, that money also comes back in to help fund the project. We add all those up together, and we're at a break-even point.
Other than the 450,000, that's a tax credit grant?
Yes.
That's from the federal government?
No, it's through a federal program. But it actually was, there were six Habitat affiliates nationwide recently working on this program, and it was done via US Bank.
Through US Bank?
Yes.
This project at 450,000?
Yes.
But other than that, the other, the other grants, the other items you listed have not been secured?
No.
Okay. Why would DCED be involved in this project?
Because of the nature of the building, the nature of the project, they were very interested in it.
In the, just so you know, though we've been working on a consent agreement that has not been agreed to yet, in fact, we received your office's comments like 4:30 this afternoon. So obviously, we haven't had a chance to digest that, but in the comments was some representation that you're going to sell these in tiers. You're going to build the first floor, sell them, use that money to build the second floor, sell them, use that money to build, use that money then to build the third floor? Is that correct?
I think what the comments were that were provided to you is that clearly, you don't build 30 units and sell 30 units at the same time. So since we have a revolving line of credit, as a unit sells, those monies that are paid back towards the line of credit then become available for additional units. That's the way builders do it all the time. And this was, in that sense, that we discussed-
The reason I, I'm exploring that is there's a concern about this project being completed within the two years.
The money for the, for the, what I would call the common area improvements, the outside and the inside, is already in place.
I also have with me only one copy, but I do have a copy of our year-end financial statement.
Getting back to this issue of timing.
Mm-hmm.
Can this project be done in two years?
It's a, it's a big push, but yes, it can be done in two years. It's imperative that we are able to get started, because it would, the longer, we have to wait into the winter months for the, some of the exterior work to be done, the longer it will be before we can get inside.
Now, the balance of these grants you talked about, other than the 450,000, what if you don't get those? I mean, DCED, I think it cut their, had their funding cut in half this year for next year.
But you have corporate contributions.
We have corporate contributions. We have not yet started our fundraising efforts on this project. All I can say is that the project in Trumbowersville, which again was a 73-unit townhome community, required a lot of open space, was a $10 million project, that's paid for. We didn't have all the funding in place when that project started. It's very, very difficult to get that done. It's something that is an ongoing effort for us. 75% of our funding comes from the community at large. It comes from individuals. It's not corporate, it's not grant money. This is very unusual for us to have this kind of grant money lining up for a project this early.
In our agreement, does it say that this, the exterior of the building must be finished? Like, we can't, we're not going to do one floor, and then six months or a year from now start on the second floor? Are all the windows going in? How?
The answer is, I can't, I don't remember offhand whether the agreement says that or not. I will tell you that the exterior will be completed, period.
Pardon me?
The exterior will be completed as soon as we get started.
I mean, that's-
You can't, you can't do the first floor and have an exterior and let the second floor go. The entire exterior will be done at once.
Well, what I don't want to see, since nobody's making any money on the project, I don't want to see this $3.5 million line of credit disappearing, and there's no money to finish the building. Once they purchased this building, did I have a right to rent it? The owner?
I can't tell you, but I know that the-
Well, I'm asking Habitat.
Generally, no. In the current condo association that we have, that is against the rules.
Can that be part of a deed restriction, where the owner of this property will not rent?
Must be owner-occupied, sure.
Must be owner-occupied?
Mm-hmm.
Part of their guidelines.
Want to make sure.
Yes.
Just one more question before I forget. Once you set up the condo association, sell all the units. Will Habitat be transferring ownership to the common areas, or will you retain ownership?
No, we would transfer ownership to the association.
So you'd be out of it totally?
Yes. We would stay involved on their board for a period of time, just to help them learn to govern themselves.
What would prevent the owners from changing the condo documents to now allow for rentals?
If it's a deed restriction, they couldn't do it.
So you'd be willing to agree to a deed restriction?
And we can also put it in on our mortgages.
Yeah, but your mortgages might get paid off at some point.
Yes. That's true.
Let me hear with some of the council, and I'm going to open up the public on this issue, unless you want to say anything else, before I go to some of these council members. Mr. Lutz?
You know, I assume, I would like to hear from Mr. Alfano's office, but I assume we're going to discuss this in a work session.
Executive session.
Executive session next month? Next month?
When are we going to discuss this?
Discuss it, if you want.
Mr. Harris? I'm sorry.
I've got some questions and concerns, but before I, before I voice them, I would like to hear from Mr. Alfano's office.
Do you want to go into executive session now? Can we take a recess, Bill?
Well, we're, I guess we're potentially in litigation. That's why we retain the outside counsel.
I don't think anybody from council had an opportunity to speak to Amy. They may have some questions for her. All right, we're going to go into an executive session for, it's 8:15, for a few minutes. This meeting back to order at 8:30. We discussed in executive session our, with our two attorneys, about our position on litigation, if the borough chooses to go that route. That's something we need to make a decision on, if we want to fight this project or not. The other thing, just a couple of questions. One is, we would like some kind of information on your condo association, and what do you think it would cost? Because it's a concern of ours that at $100 a month, it's almost impossible to maintain this building on 30 units at $4,200 a year. The exterior and common areas, the roof, things like that, I don't see how this is even feasible. But again, that's, you know, maybe you've got more people, like Chuck said, they're all working for nothing. The other thing is, the two stories, we don't know if that's something that we would want to accept. The plan proposed one-story building, but not two? And the last thing was-
The timeframe.
The timeframe. The agreement said 24 months. It's already been over 24 months. It's already been over 24 months, and we don't want a building sitting for another three or four years. And my opinion is on this, that you're going into a project knowing what the economy is like now. So it can't, how much worse can it get? So if we're in this economy and you're saying you could do it in 24 months, we'd like it to be completed in 24 months.
Let me deal with the last comment first. The timeline's frankly up to you, with all due respect. When I say you, I mean the borough. We're prepared to start construction as soon as you're ready to issue the building permits. So if you delay for-
Well, you're saying from when we issue permits, you like that 24 months?
That's correct.
Okay. That's fair.
I mean, we're not going to leave it at that. So the timeline is your timeline, it's not our timeline. We-
Was that draft sent this afternoon, that was a mistake?
I don't think so.
The draft said 36 months.
I think that would be our preference.
Okay, we really need to nail this down, that you won't agree to 24 months.
If you are saying that that's what you want, and Habitat says they feel they can do it in 24 months, I think to be on the safe side, to be candid with you, I'd prefer 36 months. But it's not-
Does anybody-
The original agreement said 24 months, and we said we would abide by the original agreement.
Okay. I don't know if council has anything. I think they all, Mike, Anthony, everybody's okay?
Yes, I assume we're discussing this in another meeting. But in between now and the next meeting, maybe the manager can contact the Bucks County Board of Assessment. They have a formula, you know, for calculating taxes on new property. The concern that I have is that if these properties transfer for $100,000 bucks, that those tax ratables are going to be substantially less than if they were 180 or 200.
Right.
And I don't know if the assessment will base it on the transfer or if they have to go out and get appraised again. So maybe the manager can contact the county board of assessment and get that formula for finding, it used to be 25%.
Well, I think what our argument's going to be, not what it was sold for, what it's worth. I mean, if they're selling it for $100,000 and they're saying they put $100,000 in sweat equity, then the property's really worth $200,000, and that's what it should be assessed at.
I don't know how they calculate that.
Well, that's something we're going to-
We need to find out.
I mean, we can-
I appreciate what you're saying. As a general rule, you're correct, obviously, the board of assessment's job is to assess at fair market value. As a general rule, they assume that fair market value is the cost of purchase. In this particular case, we have publicly stated that, in fact, a significant portion of the cost is being done through sweat equity and lack of profit. We believe that in this particular case, we expect that if an appraisal was done, the fair market value would be somewhere around $165,000. Don't hold me $5,000 either way. But that's pretty much what we believe would be it, and we would expect that, based on our calculations, that's what we expected the properties to be taxed at. But obviously, you'll double-check that yourself with the assessment.
Mr. Lutz?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Nothing right now.
Mr. Mieschi?
Nothing right now.
Spansky? Mr. Sabatini?
Yes. When this plan was first started, Rob came up, presented a nice plan, using the train station for commuters, using the fact that it was historically significant. We've worked together with Rob on a few projects, and I must say that this is very disappointing, that this building is going to have a great-looking facade inside. And as, excuse me, forgot your first, your name.
Linda Andrews.
Linda Andrews.
Okay. Then you said that we're not going to have granite inside, we're not going to have floors, we're not going to have this. But that's not what I perceive from Rob. When I talked to Rob, when Rob talked to the council about this, it was all about making it a tight condominium association that people can go to. I have no problem with Habitat for Humanity, it's the first time I hear it, because I've done work for them, I've donated time. But this is not what I was expecting.
If I may, Mr. Sabatini, again, I-
And not a plan also, is not the plan. And Rob, you know, we did a lot of stuff with you, and it's just very upsetting for me.
So that you understand the marketplace is such that the original units were scheduled to sell for between $300 and $450,000. That turned out to be impossible.
So we're all in that boat.
And in those circumstances-
There's builders all over the country in that position.
And in those circumstances, you go where the market is, and the market will justify the dollars that we are suggesting in this particular case.
You either go where the market is, where you're man of your word, and you do the project that you submitted to a town. That's what it comes down to.
That's exactly-
That's like the project I have right now, turning it into 30 apartment buildings. So you either sit here, like other builders, like Toll and DeLuque and everybody else in this country is taking a beating right now. When everything's going good, you don't hear builders saying, oh, it's, we're making a ton of money, it's great, you know, let's just, let's give some stuff away. Now that the economy's so bad, we take whatever route we can to get out. We don't take the position that Mr. Lockery submitted to this borough, standing up here representing his group, how great they were and what a great project they were going to do for Bristol. We are, as a council, nothing against Habitat. Disappointed with Keystone. It's an embarrassment the way, with their doing to this town, and we're totally embarrassed with Mr. Lockery, who came here to present this project to us.
Mr. President?
So that's all I, Betty, what do you have?
I want to-
I want to move this on that.
May I respond? With all due respect, the only difference between the project that was first brought here and the project today is twofold. Number one, the project itself will be substantially the same as it was before, except the fact that it's not being done by Habitat for Humanity, as opposed to Keystone.
Maybe we'll get a better project.
You might. And number two, we're meeting the marketplace and its realities. We're building the same, it's like you can't sell a $100,000 car in today's marketplace. You'll find a cheaper car. But you still find a good car, and you still find a new car.
One more quick comment.
Yeah, I want to move this, Betty.
Okay, real quick, I mean, you're getting all this grant, grant, grant stuff, okay? Which is great. But we have a developer in this room, Bernard Mizaki, doing canal works. Bernard, have you ever gotten a grant for anything? You're doing everything on your own, yet you can't, you can't get a grant. I think that's very, very-
Betty, what do you have?
No, I just, I just really hope that when we get this program started or project started, if that's what we're going to do, that if we say 24 months, it's 24 months. Because I still remember, and I don't know if it's been three or four years, that I asked would this be done in a sufficient amount of time, and that building's been sitting there the same exact way. So I mean, that's my only concern. I'm kind of tired of everybody saying what they want to do with this building, and the buildings, there's nothing happening. I understand the market went the way it did, but if we're talking 24 months, it has to be 24 months. That's my only concern.
Anybody in the audience on this side of the room like to comment on anything?
I'd like to just say one thing. That's a real gem of a building. It's one of our assets in this town. I'm not here to debate the project. That's a decision among ourselves. Just saying that that's a real, that's one of our treasures that we have. Has a lot of historic significance. We left too many of them dove down, the other two. If we ever look back on the river, when they cleared all them plaques buildings out of the way on Rackle Street, and it was all in arched brick buildings, I know we made a mistake. I wanted to jump down in front of the bulldozers and say, stop. We should have left them there. You know? This is, once it's done, it's done. So it's very important, I want you to think real hard what you're going to do with this.
They've got to come to the mic.
Anybody on, Bernard, is that it? Because they're having a hard time hearing in the room. Unless you want to go to the mic.
That's all right.
Anybody? Ellen, Mr. Brown, could you have our just?
Yes, my name's Ellen Callahan, for the record. I would like to ask the Habitat folks, what happens if someone buys a unit, lives in it for a few years, and decides they want to sell it? And also, would a person be able to buy a unit, live in it for a while, and then decide to rent it? We ended up on my street with a Habitat house that the people who originally bought it decided they didn't want to live there anymore. Somehow, the house got sold. I know there was some legal wrangling to it. The house is now in the hands of the proverbial slum landlord and has caused the neighborhood nothing but problems. So that's why I'm wondering how they would be handled, should the person decide to sell them or if the person could rent them out.
Once they purchase their home, once they go to settlement, they're no different from anyone else who purchases their home. It's theirs, and they absolutely have the right to sell it. There's nothing we can do about that.
But do they have a right to rent it? You said no.
If we're going to put in-
A deed restriction?
That it must be owner-occupied, then no.
A deed restriction where it must be owner-occupied?
Yeah.
Anybody else on this side of the room? Mr. Nelson?
Not knowing the scope of the original project, but one of my concerns looking at this is that addition of that second floor. How many square foot is that going to add to the overall project? Because if we're talking at 30 units on only the one floor, we're going to have a lot of single-bedroom or two-bedroom homes. Whereas we get that extra square footage from that second floor, we could have some three-bedroom or four-bedroom homes, condos in here, which again, would add more costs to the school district, educating children and things like these. These are all concerns that we should have a better game plan. I think council should have an absolute game plan before they vote on whether to accept the deal or not.
Well, we're really not here to vote on this project. We're here just to render an opinion to the redevelopment authority, who then will finalize all the plans with them. We can move that picture out of the way, too. Joe, why don't you just bring it out in the hallway? Anybody else on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Nobody else on this side of the room? Mayor?
Yeah, Chairman, just a quick comment. I think that we all kind of feel cheated. Truly, Habitat will attempt to do a good job. I feel confident about that. But the bottom line here is that it's just that, it's the bottom line. When this project was proposed, and we looked at it as a council and a mayor, I mean, as Mr. Mizaki pointed out, this building is one of our prime buildings and a part of town, a historical part of town with the Delaware Canal being there. I think we all looked at it from a different perspective. I know we did. The fact that, you know, it was going to be high-end, it was going to bring freaky people in town that would bring in more disposable income, and people that would use, you know, trains service more than, let's say, the people that would be buying the house from Habitat. And again, I think they'll do a great job, and we've worked on a couple of projects for Habitat in the town. And I think also, too, there are other houses in town that maybe Habitat could put together a program and buy some of those additional houses. But I think the major thing here is that council as a whole and the mayor definitely feel cheated with Keystone, that they gave us a program, we thought it was good, prime area, it's along the canal, and we're not getting any credit. And we're going to lose the tax dollars and so forth. It ultimately cheats the whole town. And that's, you can say whatever you want about, you know, the economy went south. We've been here since 1681. A lot of us have been here for the last couple of years, trying to make the town a lot better. I'm not saying that the Habitat project won't make it better. It's just, at this point, we feel somewhat cheated.
I don't think anybody else has any other questions. The only thing I would like to say, I'm sitting here, it's my eighth year. After my second year of meeting Mr. Lockery, I always said that he was not a man of his word, and that I was, he was an embarrassment, and I'll go on record saying it again, that-
I think, I'm sorry, I think if you want to discuss the project, that's one thing. But I'm not going to stand here and watch developed by my client.
You come in here, Rob, with that little smirk, like, you know, you're going to do so much for Bristol. You're an embarrassment. I said it eight years ago, I'm going on record again, Rob Lockery's for Rob Lockery. Thank you for all your comments. Anybody else want to talk on anything else on borough business? Mr. Mizaki, you want to go to the? Comment here with that smirk?
I'm here to talk about a little bit of the process of occupancy permits in Bristol Borough. The other day, or last month, I rented a place in, which used to be on Asta's Corner. It's an 800-square-foot building. I applied for an occupancy permit, and I got 28 violations on this thing. I walked in there, and, you know, there's one thing I want to say, though, before I start. I want to say thank you to Joe Saxton for your fine work, and Michael, and also Walker Lorraine.
Thank you.
You know, you guys have always been, I thought, like, whatever my goals were, I've always thought that you were, you know, right behind them, and, you know, you were good for the town. I think that, I think you both did a wonderful job, and Joe, you did a good job. You were a great mayor. I'm sorry to see you both go, and not, you know, and I, you know, I think our new mayor is great, too. I mean, two good candidates were in there. But I just wanted to thank you, Joe, you know, for your work.
Bernard, just to get back to your thing, you called me on this.
Right.
We've been, today was the first time I had maybe 20 minutes to sit down with the inspector. There are some things on there that John was going to notify you about. There's not 29, there's 14.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, I'm sorry, 25.
Well, we counted four. Some of them may pertain the same thing.
One of the problems that we're having, let me just tell you the problems that we're having. And this is, you know, years ago, we would go, every time we did a project, it's hard to take a project that's 100 years-
Bernard, excuse me one minute. Amy, you don't, you don't need to stay. You got to get back into the city.
I'm going to be quick.
Okay.
You know, we're taking a town that's 100 years old, and we're trying to make it better. And, you know, I always keep using O'Boyle's. All these inspections that I have, like, when I did the Aldo Boyle's corner over, it wasn't required to have any alarm system in it. Okay? So fire inspector back then was Jack Sisani. Jack Sisani comes to me and he says, you know, it's not required to have an alarm system, but would you put a pool station here and a bell, just for like a little early warning? And I'd say, no problem. Now, here's the problem. You're sending the inspectors in. Because I put that little bell there to help him, now I have to put a lock box because I have a bell. And I have to get it certified, and I can't get it certified because it's only a little bell. It's not a system. And I have this on, and I'm here to ask council, I want to remove from O'Boyle's, Take 5 video, across from the King George, the Family Center on Mill Street, and on Asta Building, I want to rip all the alarm systems out.
If it's not required by code?
It's not required. You know, one of the things that's happening here, like in this, let's take Asta. He has, I have to have an exit sign. There's no exit sign here. Here's a place of meeting.
Right there.
No, but not there.
Well, that's the exit.
Right.
We don't want you to go out there.
Right, but what, not every place is required to have an exit sign.
Every exit does. I don't know what law you're looking at, but I'm not going to debate that.
Any space that's under 1,000 square feet is not required to have an exit. There's a thing, a common thing, I mean, I know, I am, I do know what I'm talking about on this. It's a common, like, you only have a small office, and there's your front door. If it's under 1,000 square feet, like, I did that thing with Blueprints. They're state-approved plans. When we did that building, it's not something I ripped out when they came along yesterday. It wasn't required. You know, and these buildings were all done over. And we just keep going, you know, we're just, we're burdening ourselves. We have, half of the buildings in this town are vacant and commercial. Almost half of the buildings, if you add up the square footage, and I did little calculations, even the dial building store has a lot of vacancies.
No, it's almost full. I mean, I went over it today. There are some things on there that John was going to contact you with, but if there are things that are required, the borough is responsible once- once they do the inspection to make sure that all the things are completed. Now, if you need time for some of these things, there was one, for instance, it's a year and a half, they're asking for a certification on the sprinkler system for Canal Works, a piece of paper, just a document that it works. They still don't have this piece of...
That was not a year and a half.
Or a year?
No.
Or whatever, they still don't have the paper.
There was never, there was never anything, there was never anything that was presented to me. What happened there is you had a guy to go inspect an office, which we paid the money for, and then he went on his own and decides, you got a guy jumping fences, you had a guy that's, 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 he's, he's like renegade. He's, he's not, you know, you're not supposed, my tenant, all right, let's say you're right, that the sprinkler system isn't certified, do you think everybody should be getting a notification that's in my building? You know, when these people see 28 things, they want to pull out the deal, they says, "This building's unsafe." You know, when I did, when they went for an inspection over here at the Firehouse, which is supposed to be the yearly inspection after they've been there, okay? You know, they got weeds, that's not part of the inspection. A little, you know, there's an old crack in the top of the soffit of that Firehouse that's been there for 100 years, where the, where the metal came apart. Okay, that's on there, I don't know what to do with that. That's not supposed to be on a tenant's space, it's supposed to be, the fire extinguisher needs to be upgraded, you know, or you see something that, a plate that's off, or you see some housekeeping that's bad. But not to scare these tenants, then people, I had to hire an attorney. They wanted to move out, they felt it was that unsafe because they got a list that's, that's so long. And then that sprinkler system, you know, before we got a notice that that thing wasn't done, nobody came to me and says, you know, "We want your sprinkler system done," they just sent me a fine. Nobody could, they didn't say, "Come in, you need to get your building inspected to get this done." They told me, "I need to get my tenants inspected," we got our tenants inspected. Then every single tenant in that building, a little guy with a small office, he got a thing that says, you know, "Your system is, your fire system isn't inspected." You know, people have been in this, council people have been in this building, that's not a, let's not talk about a building that's unsafe. The Canal Works is a pretty darn nice building, and, you know, we put new exits in it, you know, we put new, we put new elevators in it, we completely renovated that building, electrical system, plumbing system, everything. It takes time. And the sprinkler system, one of the problems with that is, is that we're waiting for our elevators to get done, because there's a whole series of things that have to be done with the elevators. And that's all I was asking for, is to say, "Hey, you know, that system works, we have a valid system, we have an alarm system in there," you know?
I just think that the Borough works with you, they try to work with you, there's things we don't agree on. I know that you've been, we've been arguing back and forth over several issues, but I don't think anybody is trying to, you know, single you out for anything, I'll be honest with you, but I don't know. We have an inspection department that, again, went over these things today, some things shouldn't pertain to you and I, like, a door that's peeling and stuff like that, which I think was explained to everybody, some things do pertain to you and I. I think exit signs and all that are mandatory in a building, I don't care if it's 1,000 square feet or 500. If we lose electric right now, we all know that's the door to go out, but how about if there's something out here burning? So would the exit sign and things direct you in the right direction?
These buildings were inspected and done 10, 15 years ago. We did, we did Asta Building over 20 years ago, and it was inspected.
But I think back then, Bernard, with, there are papers, documents on that, some of the same list of things are still outstanding from 10 years ago. I can go get, this isn't the meeting to discuss this, if you want, but if you want, I could pull out documents today that John showed us, that in Asta's building, there were things 10 years ago put on file that still haven't been corrected, and some of them pertain exit signs and all.
Well, I'm telling you, under 1,000 square foot, you don't need an exit sign. There's something, you know where you're at in a space, and it's so small.
All right, that's fine.
I mean, I, I mean, I'll get a verification of that.
Okay.
You know, but this process we had of, you know, we got to be like a little bit more friendlier to the businesses here, we know, we're hurting in town here. We're more than hurting in other towns. You know, we're here to supply jobs. I don't know if you know it, I've supplied, I, I, we, I produced 300 jobs in this town. If you add up from Nova Care what they did, from the Firehouse what they did, to the Jefferson, to the Canal Works, you know, a lot of people, a lot of good people bought houses in here. I've always been a man of my word. This is just, you know, we're busy, you know what I mean? And it's just like, it's like, I can understand if I'm an absentee landlord, but I'm not. Every day, every one of you see my car in front of that Canal Works, and every day you go home, you'll see my car still in front of that building. Okay? This is not, you know, this is like, I feel like somebody's running shotgun on me here. And, I mean, you look at these lists, I could produce, I could come to the next council, and if I produce the paperwork I have for you, I'll, I'll just do everything you want if I cannot show you that I can bring you a pile of papers that high, that high. It's like crazy.
Well, it also shows, Bernard, that our guys are doing their job, and we're not showing favoritism, which people in town, the perception is, because we're friends, Bernard gets away with everything.
You know what?
You don't hear that side of the story.
I think I deserve to get away with it a little bit more than the average person because, no, I do, because I went beyond and above, I want to be on and be above with that. You know, whether people are watching or not, this whole town knows that I'll do the right job. Do you know what I mean? You know, we have these lockboxes that we just burden our town. The other day, I watched at that rink them put one of them lockboxes on. Four hours, two people. Now, you know that it's been, when's the last time we had a big fire, Herb, in this town? It might have been McCoury's.
The last time we had a big fire?
A big, a fire, I mean, a real fire, big fire.
One, that must be you. One on the street.
How long ago?
About a year.
Two years, two years ago.
Two years ago.
I think that credit's our inspection department who's doing a good job. I really do. I mean, you can look at this, look, we could sit here and meet you to...
There's no doubt that the town, we're cleaning the town up.
Our inspection department...
You know, this is, you know, there's a lot more places that need to be cleaned up.
And we're working on them, Bernard. We started with 30 years of neglect. We're trying our best.
That wasn't mine.
Pardon me?
I never, I never neglected something. I took buildings that were nothing.
You always do a good, we're not saying that you don't do a good job.
But I get treated like I do.
We're saying to you that whether it's Bernard Mizaki, or Pat Satt, or whoever, the Borough is not going to show favoritism. And I'm glad you're here tonight, because a lot of people in this town think you get away with a lot because of your relationship with this council. And as you just said, you're in court constant, and you have stacks of papers that are either fines or...
So that does be a lot of good.
No, it doesn't do you any...
I spent two hours at the JP's office this week. You know what one was for? For a boarded up window on McCoury, at 408 Mill Street.
I know.
Okay, a boarded up window. I don't even understand how that's a fine.
I don't know.
I mean, I went immediately and fixed it. Okay? It wasn't like, you know, like even like you say about that sprinkler system, I don't, you can't produce me a letter that says you better do the sprinkler system, you produce a fine. They didn't come in my office, he just ran through my building. You know, they don't come in and check with you. You know, this is, this, this isn't right, what they do.
I think there's been numerous meetings in this Borough trying to get your properties resolved.
I, I know that, but what I'm saying, it's not about my properties. It's about trying to be more friendlier, business friendlier, it's not about fees.
I agree 100% with you on that. There should be a way that everybody needs to be treated.
Now, we have, you know, we have, the whole front of McCoury's is completely vacant now. Okay? The whole front of 408 Mill Street, where I got the fine this week for having a boarded up window, while we're waiting to finish, get back to it and finish it, you know, completely vacant, a 15,000 square foot building.
But that's not our problem.
I know that's not your problem.
It's like...
But I, I like to find out how I get for a boarded up window, I gotta take an hour of my time for doing positive things, doing positive things for the town, and, and work on negative things. I mean, there's a lot more things I see around this town than these, than that boarded up window at McCoury, at, at 408 Mill Street. You know, and I, I just don't understand, I think we got to be more, I mean, I, I, I know, I understand what you're trying to do with zoning. But, you know, it's also comes down to sometimes, well, you know, we got to show, we got to make Bernard do it. Well, Bernard does it anyhow.
I'm not saying we got to make you do, we're just trying.
I mean, I have engineered plans, I have, I have, I have engineered plumbing plans, I have engineered landscape plans, I have building plans. I mean, I could produce every plan for every single thing I do, not just off the cuff. Asta's state-approved plans, and now you're asking me how to do something else? They were state-approved. Okay, the Firehouse.
Change, you know that, Bernard.
Well, you can't change them buildings because of that. I've already brought them up, don't make me pay twice.
Life safety issues you need to keep complying with.
Like, there's a handrail, one of the things at the Firehouse was a handrail, there was a handrail on there.
No, that's all right.
I mean...
I, if you want to sit down tomorrow, whatever day, we'll try to get this resolved.
Can I get comments?
I mean, it's 9:00.
Yeah, I think it's, it's needed that we have a meeting with you because of your complaints. I also want to say that everything you touch turns to gold, because every building, the Jefferson, I wish that Landry was around to see what you're doing, that at Canal Works, because it's spectacular.
Thank you.
And I'm sure that Mr. De...
I don't think anybody disputes your ability to do a good project.
I feel like I'm being chuffed.
You're not, Bernard.
I'm being chuffed. I feel like I'm running with somebody grabbing me by the pants. And, you know, every time I turn around, I got somebody trying to catch you. Do you know what I mean? You can't operate that way. Do you know what I mean? You know, you had some household, you know, see, the problem is some household person can leave his house, go to hell, and nobody does anything about that. I mean, it's about time we start getting on some of the household people here. I mean, there's some real terrible houses around here. I mean, I, you know, I know it's a tough situation you have. You know, I'm complaining and I'm not complaining. Like, that lockbox, that's a good idea for the Canal Works, but we have to distinguish what buildings are, as far as I'm concerned, maybe the Jefferson and the Canal Works are the only two buildings that I see that that should be on. But, you know, because I have a pool station for Jack Sisani, or for Herb, or Andy asked me years ago to put a partial sprinkler system in a building, there is no such thing as a partial, I'll never get it inspected, we're never going to get past this code issue. Because once that code thing, when you says you got to do them, give me an inspection on the alarm system, deranged. So when I talk to my architects and building inspectors from other towns, you know what they told me? You got to ask the town to remove them all. We got to ask council permission that I can remove all these systems that these guys made me put in. Or if not, you're going to say, "Now, can you get me letters? Now, I got to go spend more time." You know, you spend more time fighting than you do doing productive things. I'm here to try to create jobs for the town and turn the town around. You know, my dream of this town that I had, I'm a little disappointed myself, it's cleaner, but I'm still a little disappointed. You know, I expected Mill Street to be prosperous, you know, and things, things to be a place of, of, of fun and, and a community. You know, it seems like nobody even cares about Mill Street. I mean...
This council did a lot for Mill Street.
We, this council did do, did do a lot, but we have gone backwards on that street. You know, a little bit. I mean, we have, I mean, I don't know what to do, but, you know, we, it's, it's not what my dream was. You know, it really isn't.
Mr. De... Would you have this meeting with Bernard, can I please attend?
Thank you.
Thanks, Bernard.
Anybody else try and public participation? Nobody else?
Do you need participation?
You can speak on anything you want.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm concerned. Um, I've seen this a lot. This corner right down here...
You want to just state your name and offer the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Denise Smith. Do I need to do my address?
Yes.
By 62 Bass Street. The corner right here of Old Route 13 and, I think, is that Mill coming up? No, Mill Street, no, no, right here at the light, at the light, right at the corner where that, where the bike shop is. That corner is so bad, I was walking with my granddaughter with the stroller, and a car comes right over the sidewalk. You know, I had to pull my granddaughter back, and I don't know what can be done, there's a line right there, and then the, the walkway, the barrier stops right there, but then there's that one section right there, and like, if a car stops at that light, everybody is going around it. And then once they hit that hill, man, they're batting down there, down that hill so fast, turning down Bass or Otter Street. The crossing guard was there today, I'm so glad she was there to cross me across that street. And then when you get across, they're trying to hit you behind, you can't even get across the street, they're getting ready to go, her too. She didn't have that stop sign, we'd be run over flat. So I'm just, that's my concern. That corner right there, and then how fast they come down that ramp.
We'll have the chief look at it. Barney, can you look into that, maybe put a cop out there?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, that ends public participation. Number two.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the council budget meeting of 11:12, the council work session of 11:09, the council public meeting of 11:09, the regular council meeting of 10:13, the planning commission minutes of 10:19, the zoning hearing board report, the police report for October 2009, the treasures report for September, and the fire chief's report for October.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Savatini. Miss Collins, I thought your hand went up just then, must recognize you. Second by Mr. Savatini. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Pose. Number three.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for a pre-final minor subdivision for Thomas and Patricia Logan for 304 Buckley Street, and with that motion, I'd like to put another motion in to deny the minor subdivision based on recommendations of the Borough Planning Commission, the Borough Engineers' Letter of September 29th, and the Bucks County Review Memorandum of July 14th.
Second. Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman? I've had an opportunity to go back there. I know the applicants, I think they're trying to do the right thing. They've got a property with a residential unit and a garage, and they want to give it to their kids. The garage is in an area where it has no impact on anybody. I don't know if that's state ground back there or county ground, or where I can outbid.
I have no idea where the property is.
But there's actually nobody back there. The garage has a sewer line, the house has a sewer line. They're not asking for anything in addition to what they already have, they're not asking to build anything, so I...
Are you asking council to overturn the decisions from the planning commission?
Plant, plant commission is strictly making a recommendation. They don't have a binding vote.
Why don't I have our solicitor speak?
Well, did anybody at the plant commission go to that meeting, or did they say that any of the neighbors objected to the...
I don't...
On a subdivision plan application, I mean, it's really not a matter of what the neighbors say, we have to follow the, the...
Subdivision or...
This is probably the classic case of what we don't want, and that is, we're taking a residential lot, which is almost, which is already small, that has a house and a garage on it. If we allow this subdivision, number one, we're going to create a non-conforming use, which is a lot with a garage on it, that does not have public access, they would have to create an easement across the residential lot from Bad, from Otter, Buckley Street. It would create a non-conformity for one of the lots. And because, as it was pointed out earlier, the zoning runs with the property, we could not prevent someone from then coming in and say they want a variance to put a house on a non-conforming lot without access. So this is the classic case of where you would not want to allow a subdivision solely because the owner, who may be good intention, wants to sell one lot, or give one lot to his son and keep a lot for another child. People be splitting lots all over the place. This is not an oversized lot, it does not have public access in the back, and for all the reasons set forth by the Borough Engineer, the Bucks County Planning Commission, and the Bristol Planning Commission, I would certainly recommend that this be denied.
So the motion is to deny.
We have, by law, we have to act on this in so many days.
So I have...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
No.
What are we all for?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the land development time extension request from Roman Hall's to December 31st, 2009.
Second. Second by Mr. Polanski. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number five.
I'd like to make a motion to approve open space plan update proposal contract with Bucks County Planning Commission in the amount of $5,380.
I have a second. Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number six.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the auditor proposal dated 10/7/09 from Hellman and Company to audit 2009 financial records.
Second by Mr. Harris. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number seven.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of the Bobcat 5600 through the state bid per the 2009 budget.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Sabatini. Questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, over the years, this council has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on vehicles, trucks, and equipment. I just, I just shaking my head with this one. Something that I don't think we need. If we have $46,000 to burn, I can think of a couple of projects right off the top of my head where I'd rather spend it. That would be more productive than buying something that we're not going to use, that we don't need.
Jimmy, you didn't vote for anything that we spent money on in this borough since you've been sitting here, so it's not something you just spend money on. It's coming out of certain accounts that are restricted for certain things. So don't give the perception, well, if we take this money and pay off something, or we go do something else with it. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Mr. Dillon, before we continue, wants to bring sign up the date.
Majority...
Do you want me to do the budget first? All right, I need a motion on the budget.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Second by Ms. Rodriguez. All in favor?
Aye.
Before your motion, I just want to make one change to the budget. The change is that we want to take Squad Five, who has allocated $60,000, and take $40,000 out of that and only leave $20,000 in Squad Five. Change the name of Squad Five from Squad Five to a Power Squad. Therefore, council has a problem in their area, take a contact to chief and say, chief, we're having problems on whatever three streets in town, bring in some guys as a request to council through the chief and the police department and handle it. I'm suggesting that we take that $40,000, put it into capital outlay for an additional car, and $5,000, $35,000 of that, and $5,000 of that into computers, which Arnie feels he's under. The reason I'm saying to put $70,000 into capital outlay to purchase vehicles, and I know Mr. Lutz is against this, and he voiced his opinion the other night, maybe that's what jinxed us. The 2004 vehicle was involved in a seven-car pileup. We, the one SUV was totaled, the K-9 unit, we need to replace that, there's insurance money that comes in. The other thing is that the chief's car, we evaluated that since our last meeting, has almost 160,000 miles, and the detective car is well over 100,000 miles. That's not counting the vehicle that just got smashed and needs to be replaced. So I think from now until 2010, I could foresee us buying two or three vehicles just to keep up with what we need that's falling apart. So we're not raising taxes, we're just shifting some money around. But I think it's a suggestion that I made, and I went over with the chief today, and he thought it'd be a good idea. So with that, we need a motion on this budget. And then I'll have questions or comments.
I'd make a motion to authorize the advertisement proposed 2010 budget for state code for adoption at council regular meeting on December 14th with the following amendment. Rename Squad Five to the Power Squad and reduce the account by $40,000. Increase the police capital overlay by $35,000 and the police computers by $5,000.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Sabatini. Questions?
No questions.
No comments?
I'd just like to comment that, again, the budget is a guideline, so that's what we're going to use it as, and it doesn't change the bottom line number, so...
All those in favor? Pose. Mr. Dillon still has something he wants to discuss.
Just, I hate to bring up the Bobcat, but the issue there, in my opinion, is all the other equipment council has purchased is really, has been replacement vehicles. Some of the vehicles are like 20 years old, 200,000 miles, and were unsafe. So all the vehicles that council has purchased over the last three or four years have been replacement vehicles, and replacements, vehicles whenever possible, we've been able to put on a plow. So now, instead of having four trucks with plows and eight guys riding in them, we have eight vehicles with plows and a man assigned to each vehicle. I think this Bobcat will pay for itself over a five-year period in terms of labor-saving efforts, and I think that was explained by our public works director and the film that was shown at the last meeting. So I think it was an important purchase, and thank you. Second issue is the sweeper. I think we've discussed it, I just want to confirm that the last day for the sweeper to operate this year, weather permitting, will be Friday, December 11th. So I'd like to get that out there, and we'll put that on the cable TV also. Last but not least, Mr. Lutz has been asking for the last few months the status of the Pennsylvania Economy League, and he asked this Monday night at our work session November 9th. Asked that the Pennsylvania Economy League study has completed their study, and I advise, you know, no, not to my knowledge. Let me just give you a brief comments on the Pennsylvania Economy League. The Pennsylvania Economy League was founded in 1936 by a group of business and civic leaders seeking to improve the quality of government and promote economic development in Pennsylvania. With a rich history of civic and community involvement, and its emphasis on comparative research and policy analysis, the organization holds a statewide reputation for objectivity, integrity, and consensus building. The Economy League has established itself as a reputable and reliable source of assistance to both taxpayers and public officials. Based on Mr. Lutz's inquiry, I contacted Mr. Cross, who is PDL representative, who's been involved with the borough on a number, back in 2002 and the 2005 study. I just want to follow up to find out, you know, what was the status of this comprehensive study that they invited the borough to participate in. I got this response back from Mr. Cross. "I'm attaching the final version of the fiscal health study that was to include Bristol Borough. I have previously supplied Councilman Jim Lutz with this same report upon his telephone request. I emailed it to him in September 2009. The report that was to include Bristol Borough is considered complete, and the Pennsylvania League of Cities and Municipalities does not have plans to fund another round of studies that might include Bristol Borough. Once the foundation decided not to fund the borough's 4,000 portion of the project, I decided," that's Mr. Cross, "not to ask the borough for its own funds, but rather to move along to those municipalities that had foundation funding. I evaluate the work we have performed for the borough both in 2002 and 2005. Please feel free to contact our office for anything else that we can provide. I regret that we could not include the borough in our study that showed the very difficult financial constraints that all municipalities must operate under. The fact that Bristol does as well as it does is testament to council's efforts to help their citizens." I wrote back to Mr. Cross, Jerry, thank you for the information. I am shocked, but not surprised, to hear that Mr. Lutz has been in contact with you on various occasions over the last few months. He has never shared this information with council or this office. As late as this past Monday, he asked me at a publicly televised council meeting the status of the report. I told him that, to my knowledge, the report was still being worked on by your office. I personally apologize to you, Jerry, on behalf of Borough Council and myself, for Mr. Lutz's unprofessional and discourteous comments to you and the Pennsylvania Economy League relative to slaning your report to make the borough look good. Mr. Cross's response, "Thank you for the information. If Mr. Lutz calls again, I will politely but firmly express my displeasure at his lack of honesty as to his intentions regarding our report."
I, you sat here, let me just say something. You sat here as a councilman for five months, asking us, he has trouble with the...
I want to say this one time now, Ralph. I asked the results of the study.
We know them?
Mr. Cross sent me a copy of the study, but Bristol Borough was not included. He did, however, tell me that he sent a rough draft about Bristol Borough to Mr. Dillon in June. So he had received...
No. Did it sound, did it sound like we received anything?
It was a rough draft that he sent to Mr. Dillon in June, and he sat here and said he hadn't received anything.
He didn't.
So Mr. Cross is lying.
No, maybe it was sent and we never received it. But what I'm saying is, what did you gain by calling them and trying to make us look bad? And you had, as of last week, you said, what's going on with that? When you know you had a copy of the draft.
I didn't have a copy of the Bristol Borough rough draft that he sent Mr. Dillon. The copy that I had was five third-class cities in Pennsylvania.
Didn't it say that?
That did not include Bristol Borough.
Didn't it...
And that man has trouble with the truth.
No.
Okay?
Wow.
So get it straight, Ralph.
Now, you should have never been on the phone with the Pennsylvania Economy League.
I can call anybody I want to. I asked a question.
I will politely but firmly express my displeasure at his lack of honesty.
Okay.
That's, that's just, come on, Jimmy. You need to get a life. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.